The regular council meeting at 7:30 PM, Twinsburg Government Center, Council Chamber. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stocker.
Here.
Mr. Steele.
Here.
Mr. Scafidi.
Here.
Ms. McFerrin.
Here.
Mr. Barr.
Here.
Mr. Fury.
Here.
Mr. Bellin.
Here.
Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Mrs. McFerrin.
We ask for guidance and direction in all city matters before us tonight. We give thanks to be able to be together. Let us continue to strive to make our community a better place and help us to work together, and may we give our best always. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I'd like approval of the minutes from July 9th, 2018. Any changes?
Make a motion. We approve the minutes as submitted. Second.
Mr. Fury made the motion. Mr. Bellin, second. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mrs. Stocker?
Yes.
The minutes will stand then. At this time, we have awards and presentations. And Michael Turle.
All right, do you have my mic on? All right, so I want to thank everyone for coming that's here to celebrate, congratulate Michael on his accomplishment, you know, as mayor. You know, we've been very fortunate the last few years to have a lot of Eagle Scouts come through Twinsburg. And it says a lot about our community because of the strong program that we have with our Boy Scouts and then also what these young men do in terms of contributing to our community and all the stuff that they do, helping whether it's projects or just really leading young men within Twinsburg, which is such an important role. And I know, you know, I mentioned this the other day, I was privileged of attending his Court of Honor, and a lot of really great things were said, but you know, the one thing is that, you know, when you have scout programs, there are leaders that participate, that help guide these young men, but really, they look up to the ones that are their peers and the ones that are leading them throughout the days and throughout their events, you know, and Michael's always been one of them. So we have a proclamation for him, I'm going to read. Whereas the administration, council, and residents of the city of Twinsburg, Ohio extend congratulations to Michael Thomas Turle for his achievements in earning the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas Michael Thomas Turle joined Boy Scouts at age 14 under Scoutmaster Peter Dale and then Scott Branstadter, he is also a member of local Venturing Crew 4929, an older scouting group created with the purpose of going on more rigorous and intense trips. And whereas Michael has held the troop positions of scribe, patrol leader, assistant senior patrol leader, den chief for Den 9 in Cub Scout PAC 67, and has served three terms as Vice President of Communications for Venturing Crew 4929. And whereas for his Eagle Scout project, Michael coordinated and assisted with the excavation, cataloging, and display of a time capsule buried in 1976 to commemorate the country's bicentennial and coordinated the purchasing, filling, and barrel of a new time capsule to commemorate the bicentennial of the city, township, and the village. Whereas Michael has participated in many school-related activities, such as the Twinsburg High School Marching Band, trumpet section leader, jazz ensemble, concert band, drama club, and National Honor Society. Further, Michael has served twice as a Master of Ceremonies for the Twinsburg Public Library's Coffee for a Cause, and has written multiple times for the Page to Stage Project, where students form groups and perform an original short play within a 24-hour timeframe. Michael hopes to pursue a degree in journalism, creative writing, and/or education, and eventually teach writing, English, and drama at the collegiate level. Now therefore, I Ted Yates, Mayor of the City of Twinsburg, express my congratulations to Michael Turle on achieving the prestigious and honorable rank of Eagle Scout. I further congratulate his parents, Michael and Kelly, and sisters Kayla and Emily, along with family, friends, and fellow scouts as they gather to commemorate this special occasion. Congratulations.
Okay, before we move on to audience participation, I would like Mr. Bellin to read the rules of council here.
Sure. Audience participation. Upon arrival, the person who wishes to address council must sign in and state topic with the clerk of council. Person will be given the opportunity to speak in the order of signing in. No more than three persons to speak on one specific issue if other issues are listed on that sign-in sheet. Persons will speak on issues that they state on the sign-in sheet. Persons granted the floor shall address their remarks to the president of council and shall not engage council members or other officers of the city to debate. Tyraids are not permitted, nor shall any person utter any profane, derogatory, contemptuous, slanderous, harassing, mean-spirited, malicious, or false comment or remarks. The presiding office shall limit to five minutes the time permitted any speaker to address council. No person shall address council more than once at the same meeting. Members of council may respond during audience participation only if by leave of the president of council, and audience participation will not exceed one half hour.
Thank you. If we could just respect those rules, I would really, we would all appreciate it. So at this time, we'll begin audience participation.
First, we have Sue Clark.
Thank you very much. Let me just say that I have read the outside legal report.
Sorry, Sue, could you please state your name and address?
Oh, sorry. Sue Clark, 9845 Crestwood Drive, Twinsburg, Ohio. I know. Let me just say that I have read the outside legal report and still believe that our current zoning holds up, and here's why. The residential care facility under the current description, see supervision, taking of medications, which I'm not sure why that was not brought up in the legal report, because it is definitely stated on her website in here. This makes it no different than a nurse at Grand Village overseeing a resident living there, taking medication. We are not saying that we do not want to help these men, we're just saying it's not the right spot. The Aurora Home. In the last meeting, it was brought up that there was a house in Aurora that dealt with the same issue a year ago. I have the public records on that house for Aurora. I have read all 120 pages of this document. We were led to believe that that house was under watch due to ordinances, loud ordinances, parking of cars, and too many men in the house. That was not the case. That house was strictly a zoning issue. And here's what one of the residents in here stated, that in 11 years they had lived there, they were not aware of any attempts or break-ins. In the one month that the 217 Egleston has been illegally occupied, there have been four. We are a city of laws, but doesn't that treat to our, doesn't that threaten to our property and our lives raise the city's response to a higher level? If anyone would like to take a look at the zoning laws from Aurora in this documentation, I'd be glad to share it. The one thing that I can say about this is, the mayor, her law director, her police chief, and her zoning board were all on board. Their zoning conditions aren't much different than what we have here today. The other thing is, is currently, there is a bill sitting on the House floor right now at Congress. It is the HR 5724 bill. This bill was introduced by Dana Rockenbecker out of California, Restoring Community Oversight Sober Living Homes. The purpose of the bill were to amend fair housing. If passed, this would, bill would stress that state and local governments ban such facilities if voters favor prohibition, that they don't want them in their cities. According to the news release from Roenbacher's office, sober living homes typically houses for recovering alcoholics and drug addicts who are considered disabled under the state and federal laws. These so-called homes, which business isn't all named and purpose, house and drug alcohol addictions are single-family residents. Roenbacher said in a speech on the floor that the House of Representatives, this is an infusion of drug addicts and alcoholics to residential communities. It has a harmful impact on the quality of life to local families, who now suffer increases in police activity, transit residence, and the next-door decline of property values. This bill is currently at the stage of introduced, then it would need to pass House and Senate, and then to the president, to become a law. Brian Mast out of Florida co-sponsored the bill on June 25th of this year. I am asking our resident council to do the same, because I'm going to do it. Let me finish by saying I have lived in Twinsburg all my life, but 10 years when I moved to Cincinnati for a job. In that move, I never considered Cincinnati my home. The opportunity presented itself for my husband and I to move back here. I am proud to call Twinsburg my home. That being said though, and I know that there are some things that have been done, but I am disappointed in the elected officers. It's easy to sit back and wait for an outside report.
One minute. Give one minute.
Oh, sorry. It's easier to sit back and wait for an outside report. It's a lot harder to fight what you believe in. Did any of you guys contact Aurora? Did any of you contact other counties or states dealing with these issues? Did any of you research to see where there was a bill in the house? Did any of you contact the last Hearst tenant to see what kind of landlords they were? Did any of you reach out to the couple selling the house, or the lady that stood back there in tears and cried? I just don't understand that. And with that being said, I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Tim Clark.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Tim Clark, live at 9845 Crestwood Drive, Twinsburg, Ohio. I basically just have one question, resorts to all the council, and can you tell me your position on the sober home? Are you for or against this, and why?
This isn't the format for back and forth, in the rules we talked about, that there's not a debate. We can do that in the previous meeting where it's a committee of the whole, which allows you to have questions and answers. Council can or cannot answer to you when everybody's done speaking.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have William Little.
Evening. My name is William Little. I live in Ward 1, 1993 here in Cove. I am not, this is the first time I've been in council meetings, so I've got four questions in regard to the home that's recovery home. Why this particular location instead of one which is less populated residentially? Two, can anyone open up a halfway house or a house for recovering persons of substance abuse? Three, for future references, what are the requirements to opening up a private home to house or service residential recovery, a residential recovery center or location? And four, if this is the first in our community, is the council looking forward to welcoming other recovery location centers in our city? So you say this is not the format to ask questions and answer?
It can be answered after. I'm sure the law director will address those when we're done.
All right, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And we had a late arrival, but Sheila Williams?
I did inquire with Summit County Public Health because we were involved in that. And to the residents here, I sit on the board, and we're dealing with the opioids and different things in the county. My question for the board was, are we involved in this? And I want to do the disclaimer for the city of Twinsburg as the representative, it is not a regulatory thing that we're involved in, nor is the county, nor is state. It's a homeowner insurance situation, and so we got a free pass of excuse. So I wanted to make sure I did that clarification on behalf of Summit County Public Health. And then I'm going to say to everyone in the room, we did have a rental policy that came before council. It had passed, then it was rescinded. A rental policy would have given us some different options, possibly, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer. It would have given us some different opportunities, or other things to look at. Everyone knows I'm a big advocate of knowing who your neighbor is. I live in a condominium development, and that's a big issue with me, with neighbors being 80 years old. I would ask that at some point, we can't do it now, but at some later date, we need to revisit our rental policy for the city of Twinsburg. When you go to other communities, they have rental policies, they tear down homes that are not taken care of, they know who the renters are in the properties, and it is a protection mechanism for the whole community. I'm sorry that the pressure of the community brought us to where we are now with this situation. I wouldn't be happy if it was going next door to me, so I will say that. So I'm just saying to council, at some point, be it next year, whenever, if it has to go to the ballot in relationship to a rental policy, I don't know how that goes, because I'm not equipped for any of that, but I can tell you, as a health department member, we are monitoring and looking at where facilities are going for our involvement, and we made a decision as a board. It is a concern, but led, safe housing and water has a higher priority because children are involved. So you will see that we're hands-on, but we're not in the middle of it. So I'm through with that. I brought something nice. I was reading People Magazine, and Twin State was in it, and the couple that got married. So I don't know who's on the Twin State Committee here, but I brought it where you can take it and put it in the archives. It tickled me like punch. I'm sitting there reading the magazine, and I said, "Twinsburg, Ohio." And I felt kind of special. So that's my light level of love.
You are special. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
And is there any other audience participation?
There is none.
Okay. Next, we will, do we want to, anybody have any discussion?
Okay. I'd like to answer, answer Mr. Clark, okay? No, I'm not for this going into a residential neighborhood, period. I would like to see if it goes into a residential neighborhood, more control over it, at least until we get some sort of experience with it. That's just how I feel about it. Mrs. Clark brought up Dana Rockenbecker, I think it's, that's the right name, Rockenbecker, but I think maybe down the road, we might want to consider passing some sort of resolution supporting his motion in Congress, to see if we can get something done on the national level to control this. That's it.
You go ahead. Mr. Scafidi.
What I would like to say, first of all, to answer on Mr. Clark, and I've said this to every resident that's called me from day one, that no, I am not in favor in that, in any particular neighborhood, densely populated neighborhood. I do not favor that. Somewhere in the city of Twinsburg, absolutely, I welcome it. I think that it's a good program, I think that it's a necessary program. However, again, I'll repeat myself for the last time, not in the middle of a densely populated residential area. Somewhere with a little bit more room for everybody to live together peacefully and to be a win-win for everyone, not only the owners of the house, but the tenants in the house, and the neighbors surrounding the house. So that's my, that's my answer there. As far as calling Aurora, or calling whoever, to Mrs. Clark, as soon as Mr. Kosha called me on a Tuesday night at quarter to 10, I believe it was, I was in City Hall the very next day, and I met with the mayor, and I met with Mr. Finch, and I met with Mr. Rodick, and one of the items that I brought with me was the article from the city of Aurora, because I immediately went into that mode and started looking around to see where they are. So I did bring that in, and I talked with the mayor about it. He looked at it, and I knew the mayor was going to call Aurora, and so I left it up to that point, and the mayor did talk to them. I did not feel that it was to any benefit for all of us from City Hall here to start calling them, and so I, he took the lead on that. So if he wants to talk on that, that's fine. So, I mean, basically, that's my stand. As far as, who are these people? They're the owners of the home, sir. What was your last name? Mr. Little?
Little.
Little, okay, Mr. Little. Yeah, they're the owners of the home. Mrs. Her owns that home. She bought it when she was single, and so it's in her maiden name, and she owns that home. Now, what it takes to be certified or anything like that, that's above and beyond me, and maybe somebody else could speak to that if they choose to. But that's how that house was chosen, because she owns it. The way she tells the story is that she tried to rent it, and she did rent it unsuccessfully. And so she felt the next best thing was, she belongs at the Akron Recovery Center, I believe that's, she's the, she created that, correct. And so she decided to turn that home into a recovery house, or a sober house. Your other questions, I'm not sure. Yeah, you know, I'm looking to, and I've talked to the mayor, and I've talked to the law director, and I think at this point, you know, my stand on this is that, I always wanted to get ahead of this thing, and ahead of any situation. Unfortunately, we're not proactive at this point, because it just came upon us, we're being reactive right now. And so we have it, and if it comes here, then it's something that we'll have to deal with and try to make it a win-win situation for everybody. But going from this point on, I think that there's something that we have to look to do. I'm not happy with sitting here and just saying, okay, we've got, you know, a sober house here, and we're going to do nothing about the rest of them. We have to, I'm not going to satisfy, going to be satisfied with doing nothing. Doing nothing, in my opinion, is not an option, and I will continue to research and listen to whoever has any suggestions to see if there's anything that we can do from going this point forward. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Maestros?
Thank you, Mrs. Stocker, if I could. You know, when this issue came up, and Mr. Scafidi talked about proactive versus reactive, the reality of it is, and all of councils received legal opinion, and we've tried to get it out to as many of the residents as possible. If we're sitting here in a situation where we had nobody talking about opening a sober house, we'd be in a very similar position. That being the law would not allow us to take action now to ban them in the future. So from a proactive versus reactive standpoint, I'm not sure the city's in any different position. I mean, the law is clear on this. Mrs. Clark, I, we are well aware of HR 5724. It's in its early stages. And I think that the reason, I mean, if you read, and I'm sure you have, you've done your research, the reason for that is, they clearly state that they recognize that the Fair Housing Act really ties the hands of communities. I mean, that's the whole point of 5724, is to give some power back to the communities. If we had the power, we wouldn't need 5724, right? I mean, if we had the power to do something, they wouldn't have to pass a congressional act to change it. And I agree with you. I do hope that they give that back to communities, because, and we're, well, we're fortunate. We have David, we have Congressman Joyce's office right here in City Hall, and we, you know, it's not a matter of making a phone call, we can walk down the hall and have that conversation, and believe me, we will, and we have. I mean, we, we're following this, and we will continue to follow it while it's in committee. I just don't know, I don't know that anybody can tell you how long that's going to take. And if there's anything that comes out of Columbus, we'll certainly follow it. And the second that we have an opportunity to take some action, we'll bring that in front of council. Mr. Little asked, if this is the first in the city, what's council doing about others? We don't know if this is the first, quite frankly. I've told everybody on council, this is the first we know about, but could there be one of our six or 7,000 homes that is already doing this? It could be. We don't know, because there's not a requirement that they come to City Hall and submit an application and seek either the building department or council's approval. So we don't know if they're the first. They're the first we know about, and that was because the homeowner made that decision, they made that choice. So, you know, we do, we take it very seriously, we have kicked every tire, nobody resisted getting a second opinion from somebody that's been doing this for 35 years. And that's where we're at. And then we're, I think, ready to remain flexible if we have the opportunity to make changes. I've talked to every single person on council, and they're ready, willing, and able to address this, so we can control, what we can control in Twinsburg.
Can you tell me why Aurora's put up the Hearst wouldn't do just the definition?
I'd like the mayor to speak on that, because he specifically had the conversation with their law director on that, and I think that there's a little bit of misinformation about why that home is no longer in Aurora. It was their choice to leave?
It was their choice to leave, because the city of Aurora went against them on their zoning code, and told them that they had to get a conditional permit, plus the Ohio State Fire Code actually made them look into it too. So there was, this was all zoning, I mean, it's 420 pages, I don't want to share with you, but it is zoning after zoning after zoning issue. It had nothing, and I talked to the actual Brooklyn zoning director over there, I talked to their mayor, there's letters in here. I mean, it was, the person who was doing it has 10 of them. They're out in Tennessee, it is a business, but instead of engaging with the city, he said, "We'll just buy another home, put the men there, and rent that." And that's what they did.
Right, they moved to Akron, they moved that facility down to Akron.
Yes, they did.
We're aware of that.
But I don't know, what I'm trying to get to is, if we're going to get this one, maybe that one gets grandfathered, and I don't know. I'm trying to get in front of it. So can we not look? Because Aurora didn't just have this code. That code, that has been their definition since 1999.
Okay. Sue, let's let the mayor answer, if you wouldn't mind responding, and then any, we'll kind of move on from there. Any further discussion maybe we need?
No, I think, you know, when this first was presented to us, we did research, and we did contact Aurora. This was something new to Twinsburg. Again, like Mr. Maestro said, they didn't have to contact us, you know, we hadn't known about it, it could have opened up, and none of us would have known until we figured it out at a later date. I think we're all, you know, even council, myself, you guys, I think we're all kind of on the same page. I mean, we didn't get a legal opinion to support them doing this here. We got a legal opinion to see if there was any avenue we had as a municipality, based on Dave's and I interpretation of federal law, as well as much as it trumps our local ordinances, were there in place to be able to stop this, or to regulate, or do anything that, you know, we can do to make sure that we're on top of it. You know, one of the challenges and one of the bigger differences, I think, in Twinsburg versus Aurora is there was, I believe upwards of 10 people in this, and there were numerous issues that were going on. I mean, the police were there, the fire department there, there was a lot going on with this particular house. But I know they left pretty easily on their own, so, but, you know, for us, you know, if you read the legal opinion, there's a couple of options that maybe presented us that we can, we can explore with council and see if there is an ordinance that we can draft. You know, what we don't want to do is draft something that's going to create a lawsuit. If you look at some of the, some of the damages that have been paid out by municipalities that have tried to just arbitrarily create ordinances, we'd be in essence giving someone the means to go buy four more houses in the acres and open up new ones. And we don't want to do that. I mean, we want to make sure we put something into place, and I'm sure council feels the same way, that it's something that can hold up, and that it's something that we can stand behind, and at least, you know, if they are coming in, at least regulate them and have hoops to jump through, and, you know, before they open up here. So, again, we haven't forgotten about it, we didn't just get a legal opinion and put it on the shelf and say, "Okay, we're done." You know, we're all working on it. You know, I know we share the same sentiments as Sam, so we'll keep you up to date. You know, the house bill that's in place right now is in its early stages, I could sit there for six months, I could sit there for six years. Again, it's challenging when you're trying to put something in place that's going to override federal ADA law. So it's an uphill battle for that particular bill, but we'll do anything we can to keep tabs of it, you know, we'll have our conversations with Dave Joyce, but, but again, I think, you know, this is not for us, and this office is not a dead issue. We're, we talk about it every day, and so.
Let's email this to all of the council.
Sure. Sure.
Because there's nothing in there other than zoning. So I would like Mr. Maestros to really look this over and figure out why their law held up because it was completely zoning. And I did leave a message today for Todd Hunt, asking him why in this proposal that he sent out, the dispensing of narcotics was never discussed matter of fact in here. He said, there would be no, this is his words, "The house manager may not use drugs and/or alcohol on the property and they're dispensing." So I don't know how we can, that's not necessarily true.
Well, I think a couple of things is, it's my understanding that the house manager's not gonna be dispensing anything. I had a long meeting to try to get as many facts as I can and to see if there was some kind of opportunity to look at some of the things that you're talking about. And so my understanding is they're not dispensing anything. There's a secured area that the house manager will allow the resident to go in and out of to where there's observation of medication being taken, but there's not a dispensing. So there's a lot of gray areas in this whole thing that, you know...
They had to put in a code. And then the person who was dealing with drugs had to put in a code. That's no different than a nurse with a locked cart dispensing medication.
Well, again, it's a, I think it's an interpretation and a gray area, but it is something that, yeah, that I understand. Second, you know, Mr. Hunt may not respond to you. He bills three hundred bucks an hour unless we authorize him to start billing time to talk to residents. You know, we spent a lot of money on this legal opinion.
He's the one that put this out. So any questions? Do I direct my questions from this to Mr. Maestro?
Yes, absolutely.
I appreciate it.
And then we're gonna, we're gonna move on. And if you, is there anybody else up here who'd like to make a comment? Any other comments? You have one final?
I do have one final. I left out Mrs. Williams. And I do agree with you as well, Ms. Williams, that we do need to look at our rental codes or ordinances again, as you had mentioned. I agree with that a hundred percent. I'm sorry that it went away the way that it did because I agreed with it the first time. Unfortunately, Council Chambers was once again full of homeowners that rent their properties and were not satisfied. And I think that maybe it did need some tweaking. It was a little, maybe a little too overboard. And I'd like to bring it back and look at it again. So hopefully we can do that. And again, I agree with you. So thank you.
We also had court rulings.
We had court rulings and it didn't include the large...
Yeah, well, I'm saying, it was overboard. I think it was overboard, okay? And it was overkill and maybe we need to scale it back and then we could be within the realm of the law and we'll be okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll take a look at that and we're going to go ahead and move on. Any other discussion up here? Okay. All right, at this point, we're gonna move on to council communication and committee reports. Mr. Fury?
Thank you. The CIC met on August twenty-first, discussed removing asbestos on the lane properties that we have purchased. And our next meeting is on September twenty-seventh at six P.M. in Council Chambers. Excuse me, in the jury room. Next Tuesday, or Tuesday, September eleventh, we'll have our first capital improvements meeting. We'll review all the cap requests from all the departments and start to go through full descriptions and discussions as we start that process with capital improvement support. I would like to thank Windstream and Dennis Cabala and Joey McFerrin for pushing the removal of the poles and wiring around the roundabout that had been sitting there for well over a year as a temporary fix. It looks so much cleaner now. And thank you for your help. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Steele?
The ARB has met a bunch of times. The big highlight for the ARB is they approved the, most of the signage for the new car wash going on Ninety-one across from Crown Hill. They did approve some other minor signs for other buildings, but nothing, no huge building.
That's it.
That's it. Mr. Scafidi?
Thank you. First, I have the Board of Zoning Appeals met on August eighth and they had one case before them. It was appeal number eleven, twenty eighteen. That appeal dealt with a resident on Sharonbrook proposing to put a four-foot-deep by eight-foot-wide roof over an existing front porch. They needed a variance of three feet. The board did pass that variance request. And so at this time, I would like to make a motion that we waive the thirty-day wait period on appeal number eleven, twenty eighteen. Is there a second?
A second. Steele?
Mr. Steele, second. Any council, any discussion? Okay, Shannon, call the roll, please.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The other thing, we did have a finance committee meeting earlier this evening. Some of the items that were on the agenda were, of course, the approval of the minutes from June, our last finance meeting. And then Sarah had Huntington Bank come in and do a presentation on a accounts payable and procurement card program. It's a long description and really a drawn-out program, but I guess the end result is that we would be purchasing large purchases through the finance department or through our accounts payable that we would then, at the end of the term, get rebates on our purchases through there. So not only are we paying the bill that we normally would owe, but at the end of the month, I believe, and then at the end of the year, we would also get rebates. So it's a way for us to spend money but make money at the same time and spend money that we're already spending but not receiving any rebate on. So we would bring, we would be bringing some money back in to the city. At this point, we're not even, we're not talking about cards going out to the various departments or various employees. This would stay right within the finance department and be used through there. Then we had another discussion from Huntington Bank and that was on collateral changes. And again, this is another detailed program of changes that have happened. And I'm sure once the minutes come out, it'll be explained a little bit better or in a little more detail and anybody that wishes to read that or that goes on the website and reads these minutes. If there's any questions, feel free to call Sarah. She'll be the one that'll give you the really good answer to that question. And then we did talk about the updating the salary ordinance. And other than that, that ended the meeting. And the next finance committee meeting will be on September twenty-fifth at six o'clock. And that's all for my committees. I do have two questions. Mayor, I know we had talked about these two items before. The Chamber House, where are we with the Chamber House? You know, and the reason I ask is I went by there today and that ramp is really looking bad. And you know what? We still own that house and I know the issues that we're having with the basement. And I think, I know I called in when I saw some of the cost associated with repairing that basement. And my first, I think, discussion I had with you was, let's sell it, okay? But right now, we still own it and we still have a tenant in there. And I think that we've gotta do something to spruce it up a little bit. I'm not saying spend a lot of money on it, but that ramp doesn't look very good at all. And then my other question, and then you could go, would be commercial businesses. You know, and I could think of two in particular. It seems like this year, we've had a major problem with property maintenance on our commercial businesses. I could think of the BP station on Route eighty-two across from Sheets. And I could think of Masara's Plaza that I've complained about before. Constant trash and garbage blowing around there, especially in the area of the Dollar General store. And constantly overflowing trash cans. It just, it doesn't, it's not a very pretty sight in our community. And I would hope that maybe we could get the Building Department to go out there and do something with that. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Give me a dozen now.
Yeah, so those are my two concerns.
Yeah, the Chamber House is something that, for those that aren't aware, is there's significant structural issues with the Chamber House. We didn't get a report that it's immediately unsafe to occupy, but the long term, we've gotta make a decision on what we're gonna do with it. The potentially, some conversations I'm having with the church next door that could lead to some opportunities to give them additional land. But, you know, we've just ultimately, council, we've gotta make a decision on what we're gonna do with that house. You know, it's not, again, it's not a profit center for the city. You know, we allow the Chamber to be there, which I think it's a great location for the Chamber to operate out of. However, the structure itself needs significant work to make it long-term habitable. So we, you know, we'll have to address that. I've got messages out to people at the church to try to look at auctions. But again, if it ultimately is that the Chamber's gotta relocate and we sell it or whatever council decides to do, we can, we just need to determine that. And I agree that the front ramp is, it's not usable at this point. Let's see, the second one was commercial businesses. So I've had conversations with Russ Rodek regarding commercial businesses and some other residential properties. There's others that are around town that we're trying to address the upkeep on. So basically, the charge to the Building Department was to, let's get out and start sending letters of compliance out to our businesses. You know, we had issues with the post office. I mean, the post office is probably one of the worst kept. And, you know, we contacted them, we got on them, and they cleaned it up a little bit. It's not probably where you and I would keep it up. But again, the Building Department has been notified that we want to start doing that on a more aggressive basis.
Yeah. Russ Rodek did a nice job at BP, contacted them within about three days. The three-foot-wide high weeds were all taken down in the front.
On eighty-two?
On eighty-two.
Yeah, they weed-whacked them, but I mean, the beds still don't, you know...
I'll give it to you. They said they're selling it right now. It's in the process of being sold.
Yeah, there's a lawyer doing an aptitude business. They should really want to spruce it up in order to sell it.
They'd never have gas to buy gas there.
If I could add one other thing on the Chamber House, though. And I've had discussions with the folks at the Chamber. They've called me. I think that what they're looking for is some direction. They just wanna know, you know, if they think they're gonna have to move, then they would like to start looking. And truthfully, I guess at this point, I, maybe we oughta tell them, yeah, you should start looking because we don't plan on putting, as far as I know, okay, from my perspective, we don't plan on putting that kind of money into that property.
Correct.
But I would like to see something at least spruced up with that ramp. It just looks terrible. It'll be great for Halloween.
No, I agree. And I can have that, I can have that conversation with them to go ahead. And I think it would make sense for them to start looking for a new location.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the engineers, the structural engineers' estimate was in the middle of, you know, mid-two hundreds to make that structure, to shore up that particular house. I mean, it'd be cheaper to tear it down and build a new one there.
I'd say that I love that house.
But that's a challenge we have. So anyway, so I'll go ahead and make that call and have a conversation with them.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to, I, we had, I had a planning commission meeting on August sixth. And at that time, there was a lot split consolidation at one-one-five-two-six Ravenna Road that was approved. And there was also the preliminary subdivision plat, R five, the site plan was approved. So at this time, I would like to make a motion to approve, as recommended by planning, the subdivision, preliminary subdivision plat and site plan for Whispering Woods subdivision phase three, PP six-four dash zero-eight-six-two-five. Date stamped received July twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, I made the motion with seconded by Mr. Fury. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes seven-zero. I also attended the finance meeting. Really interesting information. And the next planning commission meeting is September seventh, Monday, September seventeenth. That's all I have. Ms. McFerrin?
Well, I also attended the finance committee meeting. Thank you very much for having the guest speakers come in and present to us. Parks and Rec, we met on Thursday. However, all of the city representatives were there, but only two board members showed up so we could not have a meeting. The community relations meeting, the next meeting, will be on September twenty-seventh at five. I was also at the CIC meeting that Mr. Fury already discussed and the next one will be on September twenty-seventh. And I just wanted to thank Derek too for, or Mrs. Stewart, for bringing in Look Strategies to talk to us at caucus about some opportunities to bring some revenue in to the city.
Thank you. Mr. Bellin?
Good evening. I attended this evening's finance committee meeting. I, along with the other members of council, attended the August second, two thousand and eighteen Town Hall meeting where the subject topic of discussion was the sober home. I would like to thank publicly the heers for coming out, all of the residents for coming out and making your voices heard, as well as the mayor and law director. And special thanks to Mr. Scafidi for leading that meeting. So I really do appreciate it. Golf Advisory Board met on Tuesday, July seventeenth. From a financial perspective, the golf course is doing great. Merchandise, greens, fees, walkers, reins are all up. It's primarily just due to really awesome weather so far this summer. We're doing a lot of improvements. We're remodeling the outdoor restrooms on the course. Believe it or not, with kids already going back to school, we're already looking forward, or looking for some seasonal help to get through the rest of the season. I imagine Mr. Mayor will kind of go into some clubhouse and restaurant stuff so I won't seal his thunder there. Next golf advisory board meeting will be Tuesday, September eighteenth, six-thirty P.M. right here in Council Chambers. Two other quick updates. Construction on Joanne Lila Place continues. The concrete on Lila Place was completed as of today and they've started on concrete on Joanne, which will take about two weeks to complete. After that, landscaping will follow and then surface course will be completed after that. So continue to drive slowly and carefully. Something that I brought up in the last meeting, I want to thank Amy Moore. She's been working really diligently to help the residents of Corbett's Farm. Pulte has started the swale regrading that they had promised that they were gonna do and it should be done within two weeks. So I really do appreciate Amy following up on that and getting that done for those residents. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Barr?
The best part about going last is you guys already said it. I attended the CIC meeting earlier this month with Mr. Fury and he basically, and Ms. McFerrin. They've eloquently summarized those points. The environmental commission meeting has not met over the summer as we typically take a hiatus. But our next meeting is the Tuesday after Labor Day. It'll be here in Council Chambers at seven o'clock. The most popular event that we host is going to be the free community shredding. So if you've got documents, checks, anything that needs to be shredded, personal information, we'll be doing that at the Public Works Building on Ravenna Road. It's gonna take place on Saturday, the fifteenth of September. So it'll be here before we know it. I recommend getting there early. Again, it's totally free service. Typically from nine to noon and usually before noon, the trucks are all filled up. The finance committee meeting was this afternoon, or I'm sorry, earlier this evening. Our next meeting is gonna be the twenty-fifth of September, five-thirty, at the same time as capital improvements. And I'd like to thank our finance director for bringing the speakers in tonight and kind of shed some light on some things. As an aside, the Friends of the Twinsburg Parks, I believe, is having their next meeting on Monday, September seventeenth. And I believe those meetings are held at Rush Hour Grill. Other than that, I'd like to echo Mr. Bellin's sentiments that I do appreciate everybody reaching out to us and letting us know their thoughts and opinions on this. I know this isn't an easy subject for anybody. But I'd like to thank everybody for that has contacted me. If you haven't, please feel free. My phone number's on the website. My email's on the website. We're here to help. And like the mayor stated earlier, I think everybody that sits up here pretty much shares the same opinion that the immediately affected residents do. So I thank you for coming out. Thank you for sharing your information with us tonight. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Mayor?
Good evening again. It's been a busy six weeks since we last met. Lots happened. We had another successful Wednesday. This town was run over again with twins and people from all over the place. But it's amazing how it comes together every year. It's always a fun, fun event to be part of here in Twinsburg. National Night Out was another exciting event. It's our third year. And, you know, we probably had six hundred or so residents come out and enjoy a free hot dog and snow cones and cotton candy and got to really engage with not only our police force but Reminder Bill. We had the Rangers from the Metro Parks. We had SWAT. We had BCI. We had the Sheriff's Department. We had a number of law enforcement groups out there that, you know, whether you're adults or kids, got to engage and hopefully kind of break down some of those barriers that we see today in our society. So it was a good event, a good turnout. We'll continue to do that. Things coming up, we've got, the senior center has an open house coming up on September...
Things coming up, we've got, the senior center has an open house coming up on September eighth, starting at ten A M. I believe it's their fifteenth year anniversary.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And so, you know, for those that haven't, don't know anything about our senior center, we've got about five hundred members, and probably is the strongest group here in Twinsburg than any of the surrounding communities in terms of the activities that they do and, you know, all the things that they partake in. So Lard does a great job with them. Projects going on, Ravenna Road, of course, is being torn up right now, long overdue, but they seem to be working at a pretty good pace. They got things at least smooth right now, and we're waiting on that top coat to come in, so I apologize for any delays or inconveniences. We had an unpredicted inconvenience today on Ravenna Road. We had a chase that started in, I believe, Roar in Streetsboro, and the Ohio Patrol ended up chasing a guy into Twinsburg, and ended up, ended up hitting a pole, snapping a light pole, but guy got on foot, we hunted him down and got him, so everything's been cleared up with that. But those kind of things happen, somehow they end up in Twinsburg. I was watching the news, I'd already seen the report, and pop, Twinsburg pops up on the news, so. We do get on the news about good things, too. But, let's see, so a couple of things, I know Ms. Williams is also on the Kent State Advisory Board. I've been appointed to it, and it's, they were looking for local representatives that can really have a voice for Twinsburg. You know, we have a regional campus and a very successful regional campus that they felt needed to have kind of a stronger local voice. So we've got myself, Ms. Williams, there's a large board. We're able to recruit a trustee from the township, Jamie DeFabio, the director of the Chamber, and we're able to get the director of the Cleveland Clinic, Laura Paske. So I think we have a strong, song group?
Lord Leonard from the library.
Okay, she wasn't already on the board? Okay, so Lord Leonard in the library. So I think, you know, if there's ever anything that you have concerns about or would like to see happen at Kent State Regional Campus, you can reach out to me or reach out to Sheila, and as we go through our roles as a board member, hopefully we can make it stronger here for Twinsburg. We're starting our budgeting process. We talked a little bit about it at finance, but we've been meeting with department heads. I want to thank them because, you know, financially, we've been working through some challenging times, trying to kind of, if you want to say, you know, turn a cruise ship around, so to speak, and takes a lot of time and a lot of effort. I see we got, you know, Ed here from Wastewater, but, you know, our employees make a big difference here, too. So I know they've all worked with us, our bargaining units, as well as our non-bargaining employees, to try to help us move in the right direction. And so we're working through that for two thousand nineteen, and, you know, hopefully in the next four to, four to six weeks, we'll have, you know, at least a draft of a budget Another thing we're starting to work on right now is a renewal of our health insurance. So that's a thing in the city that is a big ticket item, is probably close to three million dollars a year. Again, just something that I think we're proud of as, as an employee base and me as mayor, is that when we started, when I started in office, our loss ratio was one hundred and twenty-six percent, which means the insurance company was paying out twenty-six percent more than what they were collecting. We went to ninety. Last year, we went to seventy-four. Currently, we're hovering at around sixty-four percent. So we're moving in the right direction, which puts us in a much better bargaining position for renewal, and then looking at different options of funding that could make sense for the city. So we'll keep everybody up to date as we move through those discussions toward the end of the year. And then last, the, the question of the day is, you know, when the clubhouse is going to open? I tried putting out a statement that tried to identify, we kind of have three areas in the clubhouse. So the clubhouse in general is not just one door that opens up, and then we're open for business. We've got a pro shop that is going to be moving over in the next couple of weeks. We have banquet operations, which have been operating in the facility since August third. And then we have the restaurant operations, so the Aaron and Moses Restaurant, and that's the big one that everybody wants open. So right now, and it was in the paper, September sixteenth, there's going to be an open house for residents from three to five. It's a Sunday afternoon. Anyone's come, welcome to come. Walk through the facility. Everyone will be in their particular areas, you can ask questions. Our chef may have some orders set out, but it'll give the residents a kind of an early look on checking out the facility. And then on the last week of September, we're going to do a couple of soft openings, just to give the restaurant a little bit of trial run. And then officially on the twenty-sixth, which is a Wednesday, the doors will be open for business. So those are official dates. They've been published in the paper, so we're going to make sure that we adhere to them. I know they're still working on hiring staff. There's actually a job fair this Friday from twelve to three, so if you know any, anyone that wants to be a server, a bartender, a hostess, line cooks, we're still trying to build that part-time pool. So I would ask you to come out to that.
What's that again, Ted? Was that this Saturday?
This Friday from twelve to three.
And where is it?
Oh, it's here, I'm sorry, here at City Hall. Here at City Hall. And so there'll be representatives from all the different areas of the clubhouse looking for part-time help. And that's, that's all I have this evening.
Great, thank you. Mr. Maestros, do you have anything?
Not at this time.
Oh, that's for later, huh? Sorry.
You skipped from the best one.
I'm feeling long. Apologize, sir, sorry. There are no department, are there any department reports?
Sarah, Sarah, do you have a report?
Sarah, okay. Sorry.
Good evening, and thanks, everyone, for coming to the finance committee meeting. I know it was a lot tonight, but we got through it. So the August two thousand eighteen income tax receipts, we're at one point seven-five million. Compared to last year, we were at one point seven-eight, so we're down just a little bit, one point eight-six percent for the month. But year-to-date, we're still up four point five-eight percent. We're a little over sixteen million where we were at fifteen point three this time last year. And we cut refunds of a little over sixty-five thousand dollars. Thank you.
Chief Morgan, you have a report? You've been sitting here since quarter six, so.
Just said to buy his truck.
I'll give you a little bit of mic time.
Just buy my truck.
Good evening. Sorry, I'm reading this off my phone, so bear with me. We had two hundred and seventeen calls for service in July. That brings us up to sixteen hundred and forty-five for the year, which right now is about one percent ahead of where we were last year. June, July, we slowed down a little bit, which our guys appreciated, but August, it picked back up again. Some notable events, on the sixth, we were out on I four-eighty for a car fire, actually in Hudson. We have an agreement to cover a section of I four-eighty for them because they don't have a practical way to get there. Received mutual aid from Streetsboro on that call. On the tenth, we were out on I four-eighty again for a two-car NVA with four patients that had to be transported. Received mutual aid from Macedonia and Oakwood to help with patient transport. And on the eighteenth, we were called to Cannon Road for a car that struck a utility pole to find out that the patient did it on purpose. Just the nature of calls we run on sometimes. On the twenty-sixth, we sent two people as part of the Summit County Special Operations Team to Wayne County for a call where a female was, a distressed female, climbed a two-hundred-and-eighty-five-foot cell tower threatening suicide. And our rope people went there to help support that operation. Ultimately, she climbed down her on her own. And then on the twenty-seventh, we had a garage fire on Sherman Drive. Upon arrival, the units discovered essentially a flash fire that occurred in the garage, essentially self-extinguished, but a thirty-eight-year-old male occupant was severely burned. He eventually passed away on August eighth at Metro Hospital in the burn unit. So that's officially a fire fatality. In fire prevention, they completed seventy-three inspections, and also four public education events, contacting forty people. And we completed ninety-one training events totaling almost three hundred and seventy hours. On August eleventh, we did the weather warning siren test, and they all functioned properly. And hydrant flushing is almost done. We're down under a hundred, so it's been a long, hot summer, and the guys are going to be happy to be done with that project. And that's my report for this evening.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. That's all we have this evening.
That's all we have.
Tim, how's the tour from the accident, do you know?
I did not get a follow-up on him.
Yeah.
Okay.
I heard he was fine. Yeah, I watched the cam, camera of it, and he walked away, so I guess.
Okay. Okay, next, we'll move on to legislation. We have resolution ninety-two thousand eighteen.
A resolution acknowledging council's receipt and review of the monthly financial statement submitted by the finance department for April, May, and June two thousand eighteen.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution ninety-two thousand eighteen. Is there a second? I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Scafidi. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stocker?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Ms. McFerran?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Resolution ninety-two thousand eighteen passes by a seven-zero vote. Next, we have resolution ninety-one two thousand eighteen.
A resolution authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with Valley Ford Truck Incorporated for the purchase of a Ford Expedition mass for use by the fire department.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution ninety-one two thousand eighteen. Is there a second?
A second.
I made the motion, it was seconded by Mr. Barr. This vehicle is part of the capital budget, and it needs to, they wanted, they put it on a resolution because it's a special order, so it takes a little longer to build, apparently, so they're trying to get it out in a hurry. Well, it's not going to be a hurry, fourteen weeks, I guess, is the lead time on that?
Yeah, this is a replacement of, I believe, a nineteen ninety-three vehicle, or two thousand and three vehicle. It's about a fifteen-year-old vehicle. A little bit larger than what they currently have, because a lot of the equipment, when they go out to, a lot of times, the, the fireman in charge is also taking equipment out, too, so this will give them a little better vehicle to do that when they're going out to, to different incidents.
Okay. Any other discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stocker?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerran?
Yes.
Resolution ninety-one two thousand eighteen passes by a seven-zero vote. Next, we have ordinance ninety-two two thousand eighteen.
An ordinance accepting the final subdivision plat for the Cornerstone Business Park Phase Five, date stamped received June twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Maestros, do I need to make a motion to amend the section before we vote on this? At what point do I do that?
Section one, yes.
Section one. So I'd like to make a motion to amend section one, the change the meeting date from August twenty-ninth to July ninth?
Yes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, I made the motion, it was seconded by Mr. Fury. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stocker?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerran?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make, make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance ninety-two and place it on its third and final reading and declare it an emergency. Is that, am I doing that correctly?
As amended, as amended.
As amended, as amended. Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, I made the motion, it was seconded by Mr. Fury. The reason for the emergency is they'd like to start construction immediately to beat the winter weather and to expedite the construction of the adjacent lots in that area. Any other discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stocker?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Ms. McFerran?
Yes.
Emergency clause passes seven-zero. Now, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance ninety-two two thousand eighteen. Is there a second?
A second.
Yield.
I made the motion, it was seconded by Mr. Fury. Any discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stocker?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Ms. McFerran?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Resolution ninety-two two thousand eighteen passes by seven-zero vote. Next, we'll move on to ordinance ninety-three two thousand eighteen.
An ordinance requesting the fiscal officer of Summit County, Ohio, to accept certification of delinquent sanitary seater rentals and water fund maintenance charges as compiled and placed on record in the office of the Twinsburg Finance Director and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance ninety-three two thousand eighteen, place it on its third and final reading and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, I made the motion, it was seconded by Mr. Fury. And the reason for this emergency is there is a filing deadline of September ninth, and we won't have a meeting until after September ninth. Any further discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stocker?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerran?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-three two thousand eighteen passes by a seven-zero vote. That's the end of our legislation. So next, we'll move on to unfinished business, new business, and miscellaneous. And we'll begin with Mr. Barr.
All right. Just a couple of quick things. I was fortunate enough to attend an event hosted by Twinsburg's very own Kathy Posnick. If you know Kathy, she heads up a volunteer organization to raise money and awareness for a congenital disease called Kiari. And they hosted a kickball tournament this weekend over Glen Meadow Park. And we had ten teams, and my age definitely showed, because I couldn't walk on Sunday, but we managed to raise over five thousand dollars, and Kathy really puts on a great event. She does, she does so much, and it's wonderful to know that we've got people like her, you know, willing to put forth so much effort in our town. She's truly an example of what we should all strive to be. So I just want to say thank you to her for hosting that event. The Twinsburg Talk Group was kind enough to provide dinner for us at City Hall tonight, and Kevin Spring from the San Diego Taco Factory, who is going to be opening shortly by the Silent Mind off of Church Street, provided the meal, and it was exceptional, short of a little bit of ajuda from too much hot sauce. So I just wanted to thank Twinsburg Talk and San Diego Taco Factory for that, and
and San Diego Taco Company dinner. It was outstanding. It was very much appreciated. And the only other thing, I just want to wish my wife, Amanda, a very happy 20th anniversary tomorrow. Love you, babe.
Ms. McFerrin?
I never know where this stuff all fits, but since you already brought up the Town Hall, I'll just throw in it here. And I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out to the Town Hall meeting, and to thank all of my colleagues here on council for all the hard work that we've all done behind the scenes that maybe everyone doesn't know, but we've really done a lot of research. So I just want to thank you all for that as well. And thank you for the Twinsburg Talk, and I guess that's it.
Well, thank you. I also, I just had a few things I wanted to mention. I did want to congratulate Michael Turrow on his Eagle Scout Award. He's, he's quite an amazing young man. I've kind of watched him grow up from little to now, and he's really done great things. And I would like to thank everybody for coming out and speaking. I know it's, everybody's very passionate about it, and we all have a right to be. And I just appreciate, I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate, you know, what you're going through as well. So would like to thank you for that. And of course, thank San Diego Taco and Twinsburg Talk, because it was delicious. And that's all I have. Mr. Scafidi?
I'll be real brief. I'm going to thank San Diego Taco and Twinsburg Talk as well. It was a great dinner, and they're opening in the square. And I think if you, if you like tacos, give it a try. It's, it's going to be really good. And I also want to just congratulate Scott. I was there to watch the, the kickball team, and your team gave it one heck of a try. You did a good job. You guys did great. You made a great showing.
I think we doubled the average age.
Although you should have had me on the team. I told you that.
We probably would have.
That's okay. No problem. But yeah, nice job.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Steele?
I was late getting here, so I tried to get out to San Diego Taco, but when I got out there, there was nothing left, because those two hours got in first. But aside from that, the other thing I want to say is, Greg, I'm sorry, I'm going to upstage you. The 30th is our 38th anniversary.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Cindy, I love you very much.
Very nice. Very nice. Mr. Fury?
How many years is that in combat time?
My wife and I think, mine is 25 next Wednesday, and I tease her that it's like 47.
It's not much to argue.
It's all right.
I was here this day.
57? Okay, thank you. I have nothing further this evening. I missed the dinner. I stand in the parking lot as they're playing up, so thank you.
Did you have anything, Mr. Fury?
That's it.
Shannon?
Nothing this evening.
Sarah?
I have nothing further.
Mayor?
Nothing for me. It was a great dinner, and, you know, I know they do a lot around the community for, for different, not just council, but different organizations and for veterans. And so they, they plan a lot. I just want to thank Kevin from San Diego Taco probably does.
Yeah. Mr. Maestros?
Thank you. I, I would, the food was great, so I'll parrot everything everybody said about that. The other thing is, I spent a little over two hours this morning at the Board of Elections down Summit County on our charter issues. And as council knows, we send charter issues down with proposed ballot language. Ultimately, they're responsible for ballot language, so that was the point of this meeting. And we did finish that up. They were great. I mean, they, they understood our issues. They understood the complexity of trying to take an entire charter section with some changes, some of them clerical, some of them grammatical, some of them impactful, and getting it into one.
Paradox.
It's, it's difficult, but they, they did a great job, and I appreciate all their help. So I left there with versions of it, but it was all handwritten in my notes. Tomorrow, I should get their version, and we'll get together with Mark and get them up on the website. So we have ballot language that'll be out there. And we'll try to get the redline versions of the actual changes the Charter Review Commission made, so we can get that up there for a few months before. In case there's any questions, I know there's been some questions on, on the ballot language, and, and until they approve it, we, we just couldn't really comment on it. So now they, they've approved it, and I think we're good to go. So I just wanted to let council know that that's, that's done, and that'll be, that'll be coming out through the board, through us. We'll get that information out. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I did forget one thing to wish all of the students a good school year. Forgot that. We all started.
Did you just get an award for being at this school system for 30 years, Mrs. Stoffer?
I did.
Congratulations.
30 years.
Yes, I now have my students' children in class.
She was 12 when she started teaching, right?
Pardon me?
So you were 12 when you started teaching.
That's what I keep telling them. Unfortunately, they're way smarter than that. Okay, so I guess with nothing further, meeting's adjourned.